I'm going to call the order of the meeting. The time is now 5:02. I am calling the order to January 7th, 2025 Board of Commissioners Meeting. I want to welcome everyone to here. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Forrest Floyd.
Here.
Commissioner Roger Burdette.
Here.
Commissioner Jamie Deloach.
Here.
Commissioner Beth Helmly.
Here.
Commissioner Phil Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum of the board.
Thank you, thank you. Now's the time for our invocation. Stephanie, have an introduction?
Yes, sir, I do. Commissioners and all those present, please help me welcome Pastor Randy Joyner, who is a native of Islandton, South Carolina, but he and his family have been residents of Effingham County for years. Pastor Joyner is the founder and effectual senior pastor of the Redemption Center Church in Rincon, Georgia, established in 2017. He is passionate about the hope that the church brings to the community, living by the mantra, "Real people, real love, real results." He has a master's degree in Christian education, summa cum laude, from Virginia Union University School of Theology, and is currently pursuing a doctor of ministry degree at Liberty University, with an expected graduation date of fall 2025. Pastor Randy is grateful for his loving marriage to Shaquilla Shantay, his greatest support and best friend. Together they have three children, Harmony, Joelle, and Bradford, as well as a son in love, Malachi, and their first granddaughter. Pastor Randy believes wholeheartedly that through the grace of God, there is hope for everyone and a solution to every situation. Pastor Randy, if you come forward, help me welcome Pastor Joyner.
Let us pray. Eternal God, we thank you today for this opportunity that we have to come at the beginning of a new year, a fresh start where we can all come together, God, and to handle business and to do it in your, your name. Father, I pray that you would rest on this commission, God, that every decision that is made, God, that everything that they do, that there will be a spiritual undergirding, God, and that you will get the glory out of every situation, and that this county will begin to grow by leaps and bounds, and we will see the hands, your hands, on this county, and they will begin to flourish like never before. Bless every resident, every family that's a part of this great county, and the decisions that will be made that will impact us all. We ask for your grace and your mercy. We ask for clarity. We ask for understanding, God, but most of all, we ask for love. God, we ask that you would let love abide, and Father, we thank you now for what is getting ready to happen. We thank you for the decisions that are getting ready to be made. We thank you for all of the blessings that is about to be poured upon this great county and our state. Have your way in this meeting and in this great year. It is in your Son Jesus, I pray. Amen.
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 I ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Actually, let me pass out the ballots. Your, we would need a call for a nomination.
I'd like to nominate Jamie Deloach.
Is there a second to that? Here we just move.
Wait, 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 Tashina.
Maybe a second to nomination.
Okay, and you will need to vote by ballot, which will be passed out by Tashina. Just a second. Okay, and you will need to vote by ballot, which will be passed out by Tashina. Just a second. And the votes are as such. Commissioner Deloach, Commissioner Floyd. Commissioner Deloach by Commissioner Burdette. Commissioner Deloach. Commissioner Helmly. Commissioner Deloach by Commissioner Deloach. And Commissioner Deloach, Mr. Chairman, you have a unanimous, unanimous vote for Commissioner Deloach as vice chair.
Congratulations, Jamie.
Kind of clean campaign.
You got a speech for us or anything?
No, no speech.
Very good. All right, moving on. Item number six, agenda approval, consideration of a resolution to approve the agenda as posted. Madam Clerk, do we have any changes to our agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we do. If you will go with me to page four of your agenda. It is item number seventeen under new business. Consideration to approve a proposal for Pond and Company for design development, construction documentation, and administration services for the development of Meldrum Community Park, Clio Community Center, and Effingham Recreation Complex. Staff is requesting to remove this item from the agenda. Your last change is on the last page. Planning Board, item number three and four. Consideration to approve an application by Kayden Dower for a conditional use located at three twenty-two Sand-Satinwood Road to allow for a rural business for a kennel and dog training facility in AR-1 zoning. The applicant has requested to postpone this item until March eighteenth. Those are your changes.
Very good. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as stated?
Second.
All in favor, please.
Aye.
Aye. Unopposed, unopposed, motion passes. Moving on to item number seven, is consideration to approve the December third, twenty twenty-four work session in regular meeting minutes. Do you want to have any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, motion passes. Moving on to item number eight here, public comments. Comments shall pertain to the agenda items only. Should you wish to make remarks, clearly state your full name into the microphone before commencing to speak. Correspondence, the agenda packet for this meeting is posted on the county's website. Any additional documentation presented at meeting shall be submitted to the clerk for receipt, recording, and distribution to the board. Now moving to item ten, our consent agenda. This shall, this actually shall include all routine items from which there will be no discussion. Should a need arise for a debate, the item can be moved to the appropriate area of the agenda. Do any of our commissioners see fit for any discussion upon these?
I do not.
I'll go for a motion.
I think you got a reading.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're exactly right. Item number one. Consideration to ratify and affirm change order number five with McRight LLC for the admin building renovation construction project. Item number two, consideration to renew the memorandum of understanding with Effingham County United Methodist Campground for use as a critical workforce shelter and/or post-event shelter. Item number three, consideration to approve to ratify and affirm enterprise vehicle leases for the Effingham County Sheriff's Department. Item number four, consideration to ratify and affirm the agreement with Terricon Consultants Incorporated for pavement core analysis on McCall Road. Item number five, consideration to approve a warranty deed as submitted by Cynthia R. Ron and H. Arden Reiser to accept the right-of-way of Berry Lane located off Berryville Road within Berryville Pine subdivision.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now moving on to unfinished business. Unfinished business contains items held from a previous agenda. Item number one is our second reading. Consideration to approve the second reading to amend Article eight, Chapter sixty-two, signs, billboard, and interstate signs of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances. Our first reading was approved on the twelve-three twenty-four meeting.
Good evening, Liz Sapp, Land Use Planning Analyst. The county is requesting approval for the revision of an updated sign, billboards, and interstate sign ordinance. The current ordinance discusses signs, billboards, and interstate signs in multiple locations throughout. This newly revised ordinance would allow these seeking guidance to gain all information within one location and provide visual aid for assistance and clarification.
Any discussion from anyone on board?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unopposed, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is the second reading. Consideration to approve the second reading of an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Appendix C, Article Five, Table of Permitted Uses. First reading approved on the December third meeting, twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, if I may on this, this is, as Steve had mentioned before, the, we are itemizing every single possible use and putting it in a table versus putting it in the zoning district of permitted uses. And there was one item that I'm going to request that, that we realized after the fact, after first reading was not on there. And that was a conditional use in industrial for wholesale aggregate building material sales. And so it's kind of like a dirt mine or an asphalt facility without, you know, without, that's not being produced on the property. So stuff that's being shipped in via beach, via by truck or via rail or what have you onto, onto the site and being distributed from there. We just wanted to make sure that that was a listed use and put it under a conditional industrial use. Since that has an enormous amount of truck traffic associated with it, it operates very similar to, to a surface mine would be. We just wanted to make that a conditional use and make it the same, the same uses as a surface mine. So that it cannot, so it has to go through additional approval by the board with any sort of conditions on it before it gets approved.
Very good. So we need to.
So I just will make, so it's as it was read in the first reading, we are just recommending that that be added.
Understood. Very good.
Does the documentation presented reflect that change already or does it need to be added?
It needs to be added.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Tim. Any discussion from the board?
No, I'll make a, I'll make a motion and be sure that we add the language as, as stated by Mr. Callanan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion passes. Item number three is the second reading. Consideration to approve the second reading to amend Article seven, Planning Board Criteria of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances. First reading was approved on the December third, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this Planning Board Criteria, as we are set to appoint new Planning Board members, this allows us to set that criteria of what those members would be able to accomplish when they become Planning Board members.
Very good. Thank you. I'll, any discussion from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion passes. Item number four is a public hearing. For Chelsea Fernald, the Planning Board recommends approving an application by Lynn Grimes to rezonate plus or minus three point two-one acres located at fourteen-eleven Goshen Road from AR-1 to AR-2 to allow for permitted uses in AR-2. Map number four fifty-one, parcel number twenty-four in the second district. This was previously postponed at the request of the applicant at the December third, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the applicant is requesting to rezone the three point two-one acres from AR-1 to AR-2 per the Effingham County Code of Ordinances. Conforming AR-1 zoning shall have five-plus acres. And this being below that, below that threshold, it must be rezoned to AR-2. This rezoning is consistent with the future land use map as this parcel is projected to be agricultural residential. If you look at your screen, you'll see that I have the proposed plat in front of you. This item and then the next item that we'll also discuss, they, they go together. So I just kind of want to give you a little background before we get there. So this is what is being proposed. But currently, it is, if you're looking now, it is opposite. So for this one, we have to rezone the three point two-one acres to AR-2. And then, as you'll see in the next item, we'll be rezoning that other acreage, the two point three-three, back to AR-1 so that it can be combined with the larger parcel. So I am here to answer any questions if you have any.
As the applicant, there you are.
Hi, I'm Lynn Grimes.
I have some need. Anyone on the board have questions for Ms. Grimes? Question, what's the intent with the property?
Basically, we're just swapping residents. I own majority of the land, and so we're rezoning it back to where the majority of the land is still mine. And the three point two-one will be my daughter's.
Any additional structures or anything like that?
No.
Okay. Very good. Anyone further? Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is anyone here that opposes this item? If so, please come forward. With none here, I ask for a motion from the board. Okay, looks like everything is in order. I'd like to make a motion to approve with any staffing or planning board recommendations.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With none opposed, the motion passes. Item number five. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Lynn Grimes to rezonate plus or minus three point two-one acres located at fourteen-eleven Goshen Road. Yes, that's correct. Goshen Road from AR-1 to AR-2 to allow for permitted uses in AR-2. Map number four fifty-one, parcel number twenty-four in the second district. Postponed at the previous meeting. I'll ask for a motion. Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes. Item number six. The Planning Board recommends approving an application by Lynn Grimes to rezonate plus minus two point three-three acres located at fourteen-eleven Goshen Road from AR-2 to AR-1 to allow for permitted uses in AR-1. Map number four fifty-one, parcel number twenty-four A in the second district. This was previously postponed at the December third, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So again, this is just rezoning the two point three-three acres to AR-1 so that it can then be recombined with that larger parcel.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Grimes? Very good.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone here to speak against? With none, I'll ask for a motion. Make a motion to approve with staff and planning board recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes. Item number seven. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Lynn Grimes to rezonate plus minus two point three-three acres located at fourteen-eleven Goshen Road from AR-2 to AR-1 to allow for permitted uses in AR-1. Map number four fifty-one, parcel number twenty-four A in the second district. Postponed at the request of the applicant at the December third, twenty twenty-four meeting. I'll ask for a motion. Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes. Item number eight. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Hunter McLean, care of Josh Yellen, his agent for Cassie Hindley, to rezonate plus or minus two hundred forty-seven point two acres located on Sand Hill Road from non-conforming AR-1 to PDR to allow for residential development. Map number two eighty-nine, parcel number nine in the first district. Postponed from the December third, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So as you can see on your screen, I do have the list of conditions there. The last two, number six and number seven, were the two that were added at the first hearing. So just wanted to be sure that they were added for you.
Okay. Would you mind making an announcement on those items as well, please?
Yes, sir. So.
Those who can't see.
Absolutely. So I'll read them for you. The conditions are listed as a, number one, a preliminary plat shall be approved by the Board of Commissioners. Number two, all site development plans shall comply with the Water Resource Ordinance, the local storm water design manual, and Chapter thirty-four flood protection. Number three, site development plan shall adhere to the Eff. Number four, no lots will back up to Sand Hill Road. Number five, the total percentage of cottage lots will not exceed fifty percent. And then these are the two added conditions. Number six, the minimum square footage of the homes shall be fifteen hundred square feet. And number seven, the site development plan shall include covered bus stops.
Thank you. The only question I have is on this item is, will, as we're redoing our ordinances, will they conform to the new ordinances?
So this is a, this is a planned development, but they do conform to the R-five with the exception that that cottage lot is a little smaller. But that is why that, I think that that condition was placed there, that they do not exceed the fifty percent.
Very good. Thank you. Any discussion from the board?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Earlier today, Mr. Damon Mullis, the Executive Director of the Agici River Keepers, reached out to me, expressed some concerns. And myself and Tim Callanan had some discussion on that. And Tim, do you want to make a comment or two?
Yes, and so, so there was, I, I don't want to summarize the email, but I'll say there were some kind of the, the different things that, that they brought up. First was that it doesn't comply with the regional, the comprehensive, comprehensive plan which has yet to be updated. It does comply with the county's comprehensive plan which has been updated. And we've reached out, matter of fact, today to the Coastal Regional Commission about making sure that when things, when the, what the schedule of updating their plan is and when it is, we, it will conform with our, with our county plan. That was the first one. The second one had to, well, the second and third really had to do with the flood plain and the wetlands. And of course, that will, this will confirm with our, conform, I'm sorry, with our restrictions. Well, with any, any EPD restrictions on protecting the wetlands. And it will also have to conform with our county restrictions on building in the flood plain. And, and that was just recently updated by you all, I think, last month or the month before. The last one was tying into water and sewer. And we had a meeting with the developer this, today. It is a good distance from where we are. But we feel that we will be able to tie. So the, after the last meeting, we, at the request of the board, we reached out to GDOT to find the status of the roundabout at Sand Hill and Eighty. Because of the amount of time before they expect to let that, which would be in like two years, we have let GDOT, put in a request for GDOT, which they are now doing the, the study. which they are now doing the, um, the study, um, which I think it will meet all of the requirements, uh, about putting a traffic light in there, uh, temporarily until the, uh, until a, their permanent uh, solution goes in, which, um, uh, it will be similar to what they did on Thirty and Hodgville.
That'll be huge. That'll cover a lot.
That's one of my main concerns.
Yeah.
I have, um, uh, several comments, uh, one being, of course, I, I do have issues with the floodplain. I don't, I mean, I know they're saying all this kinda stuff and all these people that know way more than I do, but it's, it's a lot of wetlands here. And, um, if, uh, I was involved on the outside, but Staffordshire is a disaster that we're having to work through. And to me, this would be another development that would be a repeat of that. And so I have a lot of issues. You're, you're sitting here saying they don't have a water and sewer, uh, ready now, but that may come in the future. Well, when it's gonna be there, then that's when we can bring this up and build a development. Uh, there's gonna be traffic issues because of the number of houses. Well, that's gonna be resolved, but that's gonna be resolved in the future. You're gonna do a temporary thing with a traffic light, that's still not gonna eliminate the number of people. And the roundabout may come later. We all know how fast G dot is working on our traffic light. We won't at the end of McCall. So when is that gonna happen? So to me, you, you've got a whole pile of homes, you've got a whole things that may get resolved in the future. How long that's gonna be? And then you have all the issues with the, with, with the flood. I, I just, I know I was not involved with the first reading of this, but, um, I cannot see where this needs to be built, not with the number of houses that you're talking about. It's just too much and it's just messing too much with the land and also the number of, of houses and the people involved there.
We have, uh, any further comment from the board? With none, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Uh-huh. Any opposed?
Me.
Motion passes. Item number twelve, new business.
Commissioner Burdette on second, sorry.
Sorry, yes, that's correct, yes. Uh, moving on to item number twelve, new business. Um, we have Noah Webb. Consideration to approve a quote from Vantage Financial to lease ten ruggedized G-Tech laptops and mounting systems for EMS ambulances.
Good evening, Noah Webb, Director of I T. Uh, EMS, uh, requires updated mobile computing equipment to enhance efficiency and reliability of emergency response operations. The requested equipment is designed specifically for emergency service environments. Uh, staff recommends alternative number one.
Any questions from the board?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
With none opposed, motion passes. Item number two, consideration to approve an amendment to administrative services agreement for the employee benefit program with Meritane Health, Inc.
Good evening, Sarah Mouseoff, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. Um, tonight we come before you to ask for this amendment approval. Um, it's just basically deleting and updating some language to bring us into compliance. Um, and I kinda summarized it. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Uh, any questions from the board?
So we're adding gender reassignment services.
It's an exclusion.
That's exclusion, okay.
Yep, so we just, we're adding eligible expenses, um, and then the nutritional counseling we updated. And then, um, we had to expand our language on the exclusion for surrogacy.
So that will be excluded.
Any, uh, further questions from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Uh-huh. None opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, consideration to approve individuals for appointment to the planning board. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and board members. Um, there was a seat that was vacated on the Board of Assessors by Ms. Lisa Hurst as a result of her moving out of the county. Um, the individual selected by Commissioner Floyd, because it is an appointment to his district seat, is for Ms. Tracy Wells. Ms. Wells will fulfill the vacated seat, uh, making her term to ex-
Item four.
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm on the wrong one. My apologies. Got the wrong one in my hand. Planning board. Just a second. She handed me the wrong thing.
This should be for districts two, three, four, and five.
It is for districts two, three, four, and five, and I will give you those names in just a second. So for commish, for second district, we have Mr. Jake Patrick. For third district, we have Mr. Boykin. For fourth district, we have Mr. Neil Kessler. And for the fifth district, we have Ms. Lindsay Smith. These individuals were selected by the Commissioners for each of those districts. Staff recommends approval.
Very good. Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve the slate. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't know.
Yeah, I'm, I have to say something.
Nope, sorry.
The, uh, and I have nothing against Jake Patrick at all, but he is also in the, on the I D A. And I just feel like we need, um, we need somebody different. He can't, I just don't think we should have one person on two boards for the county. I think it, I think that there should be, he's either be on the planning board or he needs to be on the I D A. Like I said, I have nothing personally against Jake. I've known him most of my life, but I just feel like that, um, two reasons, I guess. I figure that you just don't need to be on two boards, but two, we need to have different people. Um, you know, rather than have one person that does both. So, um, and some of these other people that I don't know may also be serving on some boards. I'd have the same objection there. I just know that, I know that Jake is on both, so.
Madam Clerk. Is there, um, any, anything in our, our bylaws or, um, not allowing for multiple boards?
No, sir.
Very good. Any further discussion from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Can we approve individually then? Because I'm gonna vote. I just feel like we need somebody else or he needs to make a choice between the two boards. Can we approve each one then, please?
You can separate it out.
Okay, very good.
Is it possible to table this or is it, uh, are we down to the wire?
Well, um, we are down to the wire. They won't be able to have a meeting and, cause obviously the quorum of the board needs to be appointed, so they will not be able to have a meeting until there's a board in place.
I don't have trouble with voting on the others. It's just, as I said, I just have an issue with one man on both boards. There might be some little conflict of interest there if you're on the Industrial Development Authority and then you're on the planning board too. It might just run into some issues with that as well, but
I can see that.
I don't have, I don't have trouble with voting on the other three at all.
Is it, uh, possible, Madam Clerk, to, uh, table the district two and will they still allow for a quorum if we were to approve three, four, and five?
It would.
Does that mean we would?
It would.
Very good. Um, I'll ask for a motion to, um,
And I'm fine with, I'll defer to the district two commissioner if he wants to proceed with the vote or not. That's,
And that's fine too. I, like I said, I have nothing against what you've done.
I think it's a good point, um, and I would like to explore it further if we could table that. Appreciate that. And I'll talk with Mr. Patrick some more and.
So, um.
Like I said, nothing personal.
Totally get it. I mean, it's, uh, uh, it could be a conflict of interest, but I'll, I'll dig more into that and talk with the I D A about that as well, is what I think.
Thank you.
With that, I'll ask for, uh, a motion to, um, approve, uh, districts three, four, and five appointees. Uh, when we will revisit, uh, district two at our next meeting. Which is what date?
Twenty-first.
January twenty-first.
January twenty-first.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
None opposed, motion passes. Item number four, consideration to approve, to appoint Tracy Wells to the Board of Assessors to fulfill an unexpired term of office for the district one seat.
So basically I shared this already with you. Um, the only thing left to share is, um, due to her fulfilling a vacated seat, her term will expire on March thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. This is a four-year term, um, board, but her term will expire on March thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Staff recommends approval.
Any discussion from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All right, we got Ms. Beth. And Mr. Burdette. All in favor?
Aha.
None opposed? Motion passes. Item number five in new business, consideration to approve an amendment to the Park West final plat for the Park West Amenities Center.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. So, um, this request is a simple subdivision by definition, as it is just two lots that are being recombined. Um, however, uh, because it is within an already approved subdivision, that is why it has to come before the commission. Um, this is for the amenities center for Park West subdivision.
Very good. Any discussion from the board? Not? Ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
None opposed, motion passes. Item number six, consideration to approve to ratify and affirm a contingency amendment for the Office of Planning and Budget Water Sewer Infrastructure Grant Program.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, the, uh, this is actually the second amendment on this, and this is very good news for the county. Um, uh, at first, we received a grant, uh, from the state, uh, for the wastewater treatment plant expansion, which is, um, the contract is item number twenty-one on the agenda this evening, um, for forty-one million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand. Um, the First Amendment allowed for a ten percent contingency, which brought that up to forty-five million, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand. Uh, and then this latest one, um, we, uh, requested, uh, that if there were additional funds available, um, we do have a phase, uh, the contract is, is divided in two, a phase B, which, um, will provide the, uh, the reuse and discharge line, um, uh, to both, um, a, a reuse customer, uh, and the discharge line to the Agueche. And so, um, I'm happy to say that they approved our request for additional funds, uh, by the amount of five point seven million. Uh, and an additional five point seven million. So, um, this just ratifies the, um, uh, amendment to the agreement and staff is recking, recommending alternative one.
So we're at a total of forty-seven point four billion?
Uh, it'll bring it up to fifty-one point five nine six million.
Nice. Very good. Any discussion from the board? If not, ask for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve that. Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
None opposed, motion passes. Item number seven, consideration to approve an agreement for Baker Hill, Hill Development for Water and Sanitary Sewer Infrastructure.
Good evening, Trey Wilkins, Project Manager for the county. Um, staff has worked with the developer to come up with a strategy to cost share, to get water and sewer extended, um, to their development.
And I'll say, if I can add on this, um, uh, the, part of the reason we, uh, agreed to this, it, uh, it will be more than adequately made up, uh, in the cost recovery fees, uh, that would, uh, that would be provided, uh, on this.
Very good. Thank you, Trey. Uh, any questions from the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
None opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item number eight, consideration to approve a site plan for S G I H parcel three F located on Catfish Drive, zoned I one, map number four three three, parcel number one in the second district.
Good evening, Liz Sap, Land Use Planning Analyst. Savannah Industrial Development LLC, uh, request approval of a site plan located on Gateway Parkway and Catfish Drive, zoned I one. The site is approximately thirty-eight plus or minus acres. The proposed warehouse, F three F warehouse, is five hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet and sixty feet high. The site consists of a hundred and thirty-six trailer parking spaces, three hundred and eleven vehicle spaces, twelve ADA spaces, a hundred and twenty dock spaces, and four drive-in ramps. The proposed development is to be used as a distribution warehouse. The site has two access points off of Catfish Drive. Both access points meet all design requirements for Effingham County. The proposed site plan is located in both flood zone X and A E. Elevation certificates might be required. A wetland delineation must be completed by the applicant and the wetlands shown on the site plan must match the, must match the delineation by the U S Army Corps of Engineers. Approval of the site plan for Savannah Industrial LLC with the following conditions. The finished site will meet all wetland delineations as required by the U S Army Corps of Engineers. The finished site will meet all ADA accessible requirements and will be reviewed at development plan review. The site shall meet all access and emergency response operation requirements for emergency responders. Fire suppression systems are required for the warehouse. The site and warehouse shall meet all emergency responder radio coverage requirements per the International Fire Code. This also includes before and after racking is installed. And all water systems are currently under review and must comply with all regulations.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, uh, questions from the board?
Do we have a map where, where it's gonna be at as far as the whole? Thank you. You reading my mind? Thank you, sir. Ah, I thought so. Are there buildings there now? Is this the first one in that area?
Uh, this is the first one in that area. I'll just give you a quick update.
That's why, why I had a hard time finding where it was at.
Yeah, I know we're coming up on the six o'clock hour, so I'll be brief. Uh, so Gateway Parkway is built to the railroad, uh, thus far. Uh, this, this project will bring Gateway Parkway even further west, uh, so we're making it to the ultimate destination point. Uh, but this will be the first building in what, what we refer to as area three, which is bound by Effingham Parkway and Norfolk Southern. Um, and you may understand or realize that in the past, we have not been before with a site plan approval because the ordinance changed last year. Like mid-year last year, therefore now every time a new building comes online, you'll get to see me unfortunately.
We had one before, I think.
Sir?
I think we had one before.
I know we've had some in some rezoning cases. I do not recall having one just on property that was already entitled.
Just for the public's clarity, CJ, could you let them know where this property is, um?
Uh, yes, um, so this is the old Research Forest tract. Um, it is generally bound by C S X on the east, uh, Hodgville Road on the west, McCall Road and Norfolk Southern run through it. Um, it is south of Blue Jay Road and north of, uh, Goshen, generally.
Very good. Any further questions from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
None opposed, motion passes. Item number nine, consideration to approve the purchase of furniture for the Effingham County Administrative Building in Clarence, E Morgan Facility.
Good evening, Lauren Schuman, Purchasing Tech for the county. Um, it's a construction project for the Effingham County Administrative Building and the Clarence E Morgan Gymnasium. Addition are expected to be, to be completed in the next few months to ensure a smooth transition to full functionality. It is crucial to proceed with ordering the necessary. It is crucial to proceed with ordering the necessary furniture. The purchase orders and final design proposals are included in your packets for review. Staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, motion passes. Item number ten, consideration to approve change order number six with McRight for the Admin Building Renovation Construction Project.
Good afternoon, Danielle Carver, Procurement and Contracts Manager with Effingham County. Um, change order six includes the installation of IT infrastructure to ensure the building's operational readiness in the mill, and the milling, repaving, and restrapping of the remaining parking lot. Due to cost savings and being under budget throughout the project, staff recommends proceeding with the paving and to enhance the usability and compliance of the parking lot. These additions will not impact the project schedule. Staff recommends alternative one.
Very good, thank you, Danielle.
Yes, sir.
We just did a tour of the place, it's gonna be really nice. Any discussion from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eleven, consideration to approve the revised proposal from Pond, I'm sorry, did we remove that one?
This is a different one.
Seventeen, okay, very good. Consideration to approve the revised proposal from Pond and Company for Atlas Sand Mine Phase One Park Design and Related Task.
Pond and Company has submitted a revised proposal for Phase One of Atlas Park incorporating detailed construction documents, a feasibility study for a pickleball complex, and enhancements for play, to the playgrounds, trails, restrooms, and parking areas. These updates reflect input from the county staff aligned with the parks and recs, master plan, and support county's vision for a multifaceted public recreation area, following the completion of the remediation task in November in twenty twenty-four. Staff recommends alternative one.
Any discussion from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, motion passes. Item number twelve, consideration to approve twenty-five dash ITB dash zero eight zero bid award and contract to Reeves Construction Company for the Blue Jay Road Widening and Maintenance Resurfacing Project.
Yes, sir. The county sought bids for widening and resurfacing eight point zero three miles of Blue Jay Road, including two, a two-foot shoulder widening, with project oversight by Thomas and Hutton. Of the five bidders, Reeves Construction Company submitted the lowest bid, meeting all requirements. The contract ensures compliance with specifications, a two-hundred-and-seventy-day timeline, and includes grading, resurfacing, and traffic management. Reeves' bid was deemed the most cost-effective and compliant, so staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you, Danielle. Any discussion from the board?
This is a long time coming.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, I'll just bring up a couple of things on this. This is not just the, um, resurfacing, but this is the thicker pavement so that it can, uh, handle the higher weights, uh, and it also is lane widening. Um, right now, um, we are at approximately a little more than ten-foot wide lanes, this will bring us to twelve feet on both sides, so it'll make it a much safer road. Uh, and this is from, um, from the Sand Hill intersection, all the way to where Effingham Parkway will tie in. Uh, and then, um, soon on the agenda, you'll see, we'll actually have the roundabout on Blue Jay and Hodgeville in there as well. So that'll be done simultaneously.
Does the twelve-foot include the shoulders as well, or?
It does, it does, it, it includes what we, Phase One, so a widening of the shoulders, not the full length that we want to get them, um, just 'cause that, that's gonna take more time, and we wanted to get this done. Um, and then we think that and the drainage improvements will get done in Phase B, uh, Phase Two, uh, which we're working on the design, uh, for right now.
Very good, thank you, Tim. Any discussion?
This will be completed this year.
Yes, and so we, we anticipate, um, this'll be, uh, this'll be a spring project, probably, um, some, sometime starting in, uh, in March.
Awesome.
Is, um, is Reeves, I mean, I, I'm late on these things, but is that a company we've used in the past?
Yes.
And had success with? No problems?
Yes, no problems.
'Cause I know there's been some with some other companies, my understanding, so...
Yeah, not with Reeves, yeah.
Not Reeves, okay.
I would be jumping up and down.
Very good. All right, I will ask for a motion?
Make a motion, we approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, motion passes. Item number thirteen, consideration to approve quotes two-seven-zero-eight-two-seven-dash-zero-one, two-seven-zero-eight-three-one-dash-zero-one, and two-seven-zero-eight-three-two-dash-zero-one for the purchase of two motor graders and one excavator to replace the existing units.
Yes, sir. Lauren Schuman, Purchasing Tech for the County. Our pub, Public Works Department entered into a ninety-six-month lease agreement in twenty sixteen with Caterpillar for four new motor graders and one new hydraulic excavator, and to trade, and to trade at the Effingham County's existing equipment. The ninety-six-month term ended in September, and due to the age and cost of repairs, staff is recommending trading three of the existing graders and one excavator for the purchase of two new motor graders and one excavator. The purchase breakdowns and quotes are included in your packets for review. Staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you, Lauren. Any discussion from the board?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, consideration to approve change order number one for the Hodgeville Sanitary Force Main Project for the final design phase from EMC Engineering Services Incorporated.
Um, I may have to recuse myself on this one, since my son works for EMC. Is that correct?
Very good. Let the record reflect. Commissioner Hellman is stepping down.
Danielle Carver, Procurement and Contracts Manager. The change order increases the engineering budget by five thousand to accommodate additional coordination for wetland mitigation and design modifications required by the Force Main Project with the Gateway Parkway and Effingham Parkway Roundabout. Stat, Steph, uh, staff recommends alternative one.
Very good, thank you, Danielle. Any discussion from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
With the noted, uh, recusal of Ms. Hellman.
We've done a lot of work in this, on this main, this force main. Are we, think this'll do it, or are we gonna have more?
Yeah, so, um, this is about to go out to bid, and I was gonna bring it up in my admin report, just everything that we have coming up. Um, so this would be the last item, um, and just, I'll give you a quick explanation of this. Trey, when he reviewed the plans and they came back to us, there was, uh, quite a substantial bill, um, for wetlands mitigation on it, uh, and we were gonna put an alternative in the bid to, uh, to bore under the wetlands, and then compare the two, uh, two prices. So if the, um, without the boring comes in, and then when you add that with the wetlands mitigation, if, um, if that's less expensive, we go with that. If it's more expensive, we go with the, uh, with the alternative. Um, and so, um, it was, um, I think we'll probably end up saving money, uh, uh, going underneath the wetlands versus, um, going through them.
Be better for the environment, too, at the same time.
Correct, yeah, just a little bit more labor, but at the cost of wetland mitigation right now, it's definitely worthwhile.
This is Ogeechi or Savannah River Basin?
Uh, this would be the Savannah.
Any further discussion from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion?
We've already voted.
We've already voted.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Item number fifteen, consideration to approve a proposal with Musco Sports Lighting for McCall Park, which includes turnkey installation of LED sports lighting systems for the softball fields.
Yes, sir. This proposal for, is for Musco, um, Sports Lighting at McCall Park, featuring a turnkey installation of advanced LED lighting system for the softball fields. The system enhances visibility, improves safety, and increases energy efficiency while supporting the county's commitment to upgrading recreational facilities. Additionally, it includes a twenty-five-year warranty ensuring maintenance-free operation. So staff recommends alternative one.
But does it change colors?
Yeah.
Very good. Any questions from the board?
No, I'm excited to see this, uh, make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item sixteen, consideration to approve a proposal for the Oakland Gov. Capital Budgeting Module to enhance the county's capital budget management capabilities, streamline reporting processes, and improve transparency.
Yes, sir. The Open Gov. Capital Budgeting Proposal offers a platform to enhance the county's fiscal management by streamlining budgeting processes, improving reporting transparency, and enabling efficient capital planning. Two pricing options are available, with option one providing a more comprehensive, um, features such as operating budgets, workforce planning, and online budget publications. This system aligns with the county's objectives to improve financial efficiency and transparency, so staff recommends alternative one.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could add too, uh, so one of the things we've been looking for is a tool that we can track and make available to not just you all, but the public on what capital projects are coming down the pipeline, how they are funded, when they anticipate to be let, uh, and where they are, uh, in the process. This will provide a, um, a portal, uh, for the residents to review that. Um, and then, in addition, this same software, just with a, an expanded module, actually takes the same thing, uh, same process to our entire budget, um, where rather than just giving a PDF, um, that says, yeah, here's a budget, if you wanna find the funding, you know, do a word search or something, um, it actually provides an online budget book, uh, that people can search and actually look at real-time performance of how we're doing, uh, budget to actual, uh, at any given time. It, it updates, uh, every night. So it's a, um, it's a, uh, it's gonna be a substantial improvement as to what we have, and it's also, um, not this year, but next year, uh, is gonna make the budgeting processes for the departments and the electeds, uh, a lot simpler and bring it online and in the cloud, so.
And, Mr. Chairman and Board Members, you have been provided, um, updated material. It should be there on the dais for you.
I will say too, that, um, I sat with Tim through a, uh, separate meeting on the Open Gov. Software, and I think it's gonna be great, uh, a lot of transparency for the county, so. With that, I'll ask for a motion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, six. Phil. None opposed, motion passes. Item number eighteen.
Six o'clock. Planning Board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Planning Board session.
I skipped that, you're exactly right. Moving on to Planning Board. Item number one in our Planning Board is a public hearing. Consideration to approve an application by Jack Williford for a variance from Ordinance Section three dot four to allow for reduction in the required buffers located at seventeen forty-five Georgia Highway seventeen South, map number two-nine-seven, parcel number fifty-nine C in the first district.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, so the applicant is requesting a variance from Ordinance Section three point four to allow for a complete reduction in required buffers, um, to the parcel to the east, as you can see here, so that would be parcel two-nine-seven-dash-five-nine delta. Um, as both parcels have the same owner, um, the required buffer between B three and AR one is thirty feet, and I did provide that, uh, buffer chart there for you as well. Um, so this variance will be for a reduction of the entire thirty feet. Staff has reviewed the completed application, and if approved, uh, this variance will meet the criteria of the current ordinance.
Is the applicant present?
I am. And just for clarification, their request is for, for the buffer variance reduction all the way around the property. Um, so the, the request is being made, it's a church, um, so it's not gonna be something that we have overnight parking or anything, you know, regular commercial property. So being that a church can also be on agriculture, residential, or commercial property, of course, that ordinance does not apply to, um, agriculture, residential. So I was asking for variance for the whole, just for clarification purpose.
Sir, please state your name for the record.
Jack Williford.
Thank you.
Now, you own the one piece of property back directly behind you. How about the parcel, I guess, to the north of you?
Um, the residential parcel next to us is owned by a gentleman named Ryan Lee. I've spoke to him, he said he would, you know, give a, give a letter if need be, he has no issues with, and across the street from us is a, um, the Dollar General's, you know, cattywampus across the, the four-way, and then we have, uh, a gas station and Panor Handyhouses, which also has, you know, obviously no vegetation buffers as well. And our church will be, like, obviously, it's new construction, we will aim to absolutely keep everything clean, um, understanding that the, the vegetation buffer is really to hinder a eyesore or, you know, anything that conflicts with, uh, just cosmetics.
My initial, I'm gonna start the discussion, then we'll go. My initial concern was, I, I didn't realize it was a church. If this was a typical business, I would not be on board with this, or have any inkling to do this, because it would set a precedent. Uh, I talked to Lee and see if there was a way that we could possibly put a condition on it, should it ever be used for anything other than a church, then this variance would go away.
Yes, sir.
I would be good with that. And the main reason for this buffer is because you would have to go in, it's not so much you need to build closer to the property line, it's because with the ordinance now, you have to go in and plant trees, is that not what you stated?
That, that's what I understand it is, and I, I, you know...
So there's a tremendous cost to the church?
Tremendous, yes, sir. Nine acres with a buffer all the way around, we'd be probably looking at between thirty and forty thousand dollars. And, uh, I just wanna steward well what God puts in my hands, to be honest with you, and, uh, serve my body well.
I just, uh, I just wanna make sure it's only for this specific use. Open for discussion with everybody on this, but...
I'm in total agreement, 'cause, you know...
If he sells it.
In the future, he sells it, for whatever reason, I, I hope that doesn't happen, but none of us predict, but that way you wouldn't have to...
I hope you run out of parking, to be honest with you. Me too, praise God.
And Lee, if I word that correctly, that, uh, that it could be with a condition that should it ever be used for anything other than a church?
Yeah, you'll just wanna be clear, when you, if you make a motion to approve it, that that condition will only be there as long as there's a church for the use of that property. If it ever ceases to be a church, then the buffer requirements will be reinstated.
Can, can, can we add that it's for this particular church? Because, you know, depending on who comes in next time, I mean, if, if they sell it as another church, or something that wants to do something, I mean, I, I just, I'm, I'm concerned, like you say, of setting precedents. So, I mean, would that be going too far?
You against some other church?
No. I might be, some of them now. I might be.
I don't know if we could do it to, specific to your church, I don't know, uh, I hadn't thought about that.
I, I guess you could probably tie it to the current owner of the property. Yeah. And do it that way, not necessarily a particular church.
And it doesn't stop him from selling the property for another use, you just have to put, they'd have to put the buffers in.
Right.
Or he's gonna come back.
Or come back and ask, yeah, correct.
It's God's property, we won't be selling it, but I understand.
Very good, very good. Uh, any further questions from Mr. Williford? Very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here opposed to this item? If not, uh, Madam, Madam Clerk, do you have the noted changes, uh, requested here? If you could read those back, of course, that'd be great.
My motion would be with staff recommendations plus, basically what we discussed with Lee.
My motion would be with staff recommendations plus, basically what we discussed with Lee.
So the condition will be if the current property owner ceases to be a, a church, or I guess sells the property as well, then the buffer ordinance requirements will be reinstated.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in, all in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, the motion passes.
So. That would push the second reading to, to the next meeting because we made changes.
Very good. Moving on to item number three. Consideration to approve an application. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're exactly right. Item number two.
Who's got the leg? And we can't do a second reading.
Get hit himself here.
So that concludes your segment of planning board. Item number two is postponed due to the added stipulation. So we can go back to new business?
All righty, and we left off on number eighteen, is that correct?
New business number eighteen, yes, sir.
Item number eighteen, new business. Consideration to approve an agreement for on-call environmental services with resource and land consultants.
Sir, Danielle Carver, procurement and contracts manager. The proposed on-call environmental services agreement with resource and land consultants will provide essential support for the county projects by ensuring compliance with environmental regulations and facilitating permit, the permitting process. Services include aquatic resource assessments, Clean Water Act permitting mitigation planning, and endangered species consultants. Work will be task-specific with scopes and budgets approved prior to commencement. So staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you, Danielle. Any discussion from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item number eighteen, consideration to approve twenty-five dash ITB dash zero seven four bid award and contract to J.A. Long Incorporated for the ice dash seven B Hodgville at Blue Jay Road Roundabout Project.
Awesome. It'd be nineteen on that one.
Yes, sir. So Effingham County's.
It's the right one. It's, it's number.
Number nineteen.
Nineteen. Effingham County is considering awarding contract twenty-four ITB zero seven four to J.A. Long Incorporated to construct a single-lane roundabout at the Hodgville and Blue Jay Road intersection. The project at the, is at the critical, is it critical to address traffic congestion and improve safety? This project will reduce congestion and enhance safety. The scope includes site clearing, grading, drainage improvements, utility adjustments, traffic control, and lighting with a timeline of five hundred and forty days. The project aligns with county transportation parties and is funded through the twenty twenty-five TSPLOS budget. Approval of this contract will allow the county to move forward with the construction of this roundabout. So staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you, Danielle. Any discussion from the board or any elaboration?
Fantastic. I recommend, make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, motion passes. Item number twenty, consideration to approve to award a contract for twenty-four dash ITB dash zero six nine SR dash twenty-one at McCall Signal Construction to Moy Electric.
Yes, sir. Effingham County is considering awarding this contract to Moy Electric Company. The project involves the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of State Road twenty-one and McCall Road in Effingham County. The scope of work includes meeting GDOT specifications to improve traffic flow and safety at State Road twenty-one and McCall Road intersection. The contractor was selected through the competitive bidding process and meets GDOT standards. Completion is expected within ninety days of the notice to proceed. The project aligns with transportation safety goals and is funded by the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Approval of this contract will allow the county to move forward with the construction of this traffic signal. So staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you, Danielle. Any discussion from the board?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah on that one.
Yeah, a lot of people are looking forward to this.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, the motion passes.
They'll start tomorrow.
Moving on to item number twenty-one, consideration to approve to ratify and affirm a contract to Ruby Collins Incorporated for the twenty-four dash ITB dash zero six five wastewater treatment plant construction project bid.
Yes, sir. Effingham County conducted a competitive bidding process for the construction of a two-point-zero MGD wastewater treatment plant under ITB twenty-four ITB zero six five. Ruby Collins Incorporated was selected as the contractor through evaluation, offering the lowest response of bid. The project's scope includes essential wastewater infrastructure to support the county's growth and maintain compliance with regulatory standards. This recommended award was approved by Tim Callanan, the county manager, per the award authorization given during the last board meeting on December the third, twenty twenty-four. In order to meet our allocation deadlines, the bid had to be awarded and contract signed prior to the year end. So staff recommends the ratification of this award recommendation and contract.
Tim, you have any?
No, I, I will say that we were very happy with the bid. We did get, we get two, we did get two bids on this. And it's, it's basically came in right at where the engineer's estimate would be good. So that's compared to what we're seeing in other jurisdictions around us, that's, that's a very good sign. And Ruby Collins has done most of the construction work on a lot of the major wastewater treatment facilities here. So it's a great, it's a great company to be working with. So we're extremely happy.
Thank you.
What's the deviation between the other bidder? Just curious.
It's eight million dollars.
Any discussion from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number twenty-two, consideration to approve revisions to Effingham County Stormwater Management Local Design Manual.
Hey, good evening. I'm Jonathan Holm, county engineer. This update to the Effingham County Stormwater Management Local Design Manual, we discussed in the previous workshop, but in summary, because I know two of y'all weren't here for that, it is pretty much just updating some of the outdated references in it. And then also, it's raising some of our stormwater design criteria for the county, knowing that there's been concerns about stormwater and what are we doing to improve it? So I gave it a hard look and briefly going over it. I don't want to bore anyone to sleep.
I watched the video last night, actually.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then, do you need me to go through it or?
Ms. Holme has an urgent. I'm assuming.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Carry on.
Okay.
That's good, because I probably won't understand half of it, so go ahead.
Okay, well, mainly, what we're doing is in our neighborhood road, our neighborhoods, instead of it being a ten-year storm event to design to, we're going to be raising it to a twenty-five-year storm event. So that'll mean that you'll have to have bigger ditches and bigger pipes to convey for a bigger storm event. There'll also be, instead of just an eight-foot wide lane open during your major rain events, it's going to be a whole lane width, so we're increasing the amount of flooding that is allowed in a road as well. We're also lowering the amount of flooding that's allowed in parking lots from a half a foot down to three inches. Reason why is you don't want water touching the tailpipe of your vehicle, otherwise it could be totaled. So we're trying to increase that to improve our, you know, standards here. The other thing that is worth mentioning is on the upside and downstream of the driveway pipes or any pipe, we're going to require for there to be riprap to help prevent erosion and continual maintenance by homeowners or, you know, businesses or industrial. That right now, we don't have that standard there. So by putting riprap up as a head wall, it'll help prevent erosion and also protect the environment a little bit better.
That's not a huge cost either, is it, to do that?
There, there's a, there is a, a small increase, but I think in the long run, it'll be, it'll save money because you won't be having to come out for maintenance. That's right.
It seems to be a point of contention a lot with, with residents, so.
Are there other options if they actually do concrete head walls or any, I mean, are there other, you know, they're not bound to riprap?
Yeah, riprap's the minimum. And then if they, if it's a, I put in here specifically, if it's greater than thirty inches in diameter, that a head wall or something will need to be submitted for staff to review. But yeah, they're, it'll be open for, if they want to go above and beyond riprap, but right now, we have nothing.
Got you, yeah.
Got you. Thank you, Jonathan.
Staff is recommending alternative number one.
Awesome. Any further questions from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, motion passes. Item number twenty-three, consideration to approve a financial commitment in letter of support for planners, communication, broadband equity, access, and deployment program application.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So we've been actively working to try and figure out how to improve broadband access in certain areas of the county that, that are either underserved or not served at all with broadband. And so as part of the infrastructure, federal infrastructure act that was passed a couple of years ago, it created this broadband equity access and deployment program. And essentially, the grant application, and there'll be multiple applicants trying to compete for this, but the end result is every underserved property in the county, and that's for the folks on slow DSL or inconsistent, even if they have a, what used to be considered a broadband connection, bring them up to standards and bring any location that does not have broadband. So it, it would provide the funding for that. And so we recently provided a letter of support to, I think it was Windstream, when they were applying, but we, we sat down with planners. Planners is the county's provider for, for our county-owned, for our county network. And so we've, we're requesting that we, that you approve a letter of support. But also, it also gives the application more strength if the county provides a financial commitment. The county was going, to, in order to provide certain facilities of ours, we would have, like our boat landings, some of our remote fire stations and EMS stations, we would easily have spent this dollar amount anyway, so that we're wrecking a, recommending a commitment of, of a hundred thousand dollars towards the match that's going to be required for this full build-out. So staff is recommending alternative one.
Thank you, Tim. Any discussion from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, motion passes. Item number twenty-four, consideration to approve a memorandum of understanding between Effingham County and SFG GITC West LLC and DCP Purchaser Incorporated, Diamond Concrete Products Holding LLC and Hollingshead Materials LLC located off Highway twenty-one South.
Do you want, so just a little background on this. This is the, what we've been discussing as to getting the concrete trucks from the diamond concrete and the concrete plant off of Hodgville Road. This would partner with the developer who's currently developing a industrial park in between the, the, those two facilities, the concrete pipe and the concrete plant, and Effingham Parkway. Effingham Parkway is a truck route. So this would, it's kind of a, it's a joint cost agreement between the county and the developer to utilize his road and create a connector road between the two facilities to get trucks directly onto Effingham Parkway and then close the access to those facilities from Hodgville.
Tim, is, is it true that Allen is considering selling the business to someone else?
I have not discussed it with him, but it's my understanding that, that, that was, he is, that there, there may be a change of ownership.
Very good.
I assume this contract's transferable.
That's what I, my next question was, will it move on with the other? So, very good. Okay. Any further questions from the board?
Yeah, I've got a few comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, because we do have to remove something.
Yeah, we've got.
And I'll let Lee take care of that from you. Go ahead.
Lee, did you want to, or you want me to speak to that or?
Go ahead and speak.
Okay. Overall, this is great for our constituents. You're going to get a lot of truck traffic off of Hodgville, which is mainly residential, obviously. And overall, it's going to be wonderful. We've been working on this for a long time, and the money would be well spent. The issue that, the thing we would all have a problem with, I hope we would, is the access to Hodgville Road. There's no problem with access as far as construction goes, but there will be no commercial trucks allowed to use Hodgville until, at all, unless they're currently using them. I want to be clear as I can. So if you're on the property of Diamond Concrete or the ones currently using it, you can continue to use Hodgville. Any future building will not be able to use Hodgville for any reason other than construction. So any truck traffic, any commercial traffic that's as a result of a new building or a new warehouse will have to wait until they can use Effingham Parkway.
And, Miss Chairman, that was a condition of the rezoning.
Right.
And so this MOU cannot supersede the condition of the rezoning. And that, I think that original wording was in there, so I think we are asking to approve either an amended, I mean, either a change, a new update to the agreement or the existing agreement without that, without that wording in there. Is that correctly?
Yeah, if you want to approve the, the MOU tonight on the condition that the wording is changed to just what Commissioner Burdette said, so there's no truck traffic that's going to flow from any new building from the developer until the Effingham Parkway is complete, then you can approve that. And if, if they agree, if the other parties agree, we can make that revision and have the chairman sign the agreement. If it falls apart, then, then we can bring it back to the board for further review and discussion.
Just so I'm clear, the approval, the agreement, how we approved it, you said supersedes this memorandum, so there's no.
Yeah, when we approved the zoning of the property, there's a condition on there that says only construction traffic can utilize Hodgville Road and that the, any sort of the industrial or commercial traffic would have to use Effingham Parkway. And so I, so the MOU really cannot change that. And so I think.
It would still be prudent to knowingly.
Still be prudent just to.
This was more concerning Diamond Concrete, which is already in existence, was.
Right. Nothing will change for them. I mean, obviously, you've got to keep them in business and keep them using what they're using currently, but.
Correct.
That's right. This doesn't, when that condition of rezoning is only on the GITC West property, not on any of the other properties.
Very good.
The Diamond will be agreeing, once Effingham Parkway is accessible, to take the trucks off Hodgville, putting them on Effingham Parkway, which pulls all three together to make sense for constituents and for the industrial part for that matter.
Business is usual for them until this is done, and then they migrate back to.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I'll ask for a motion.
That'd be a lot, be a mouthful. Can I just say so moved on that and be okay with all the things we talked about, or should I, should I go back through it with the condition?
Do you have the conditions?
Okay, okay. So. I recommend approval of the MOU with, with. I recommend uh approval of the MOU with, with the changes that were sta- were stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. All right, moving forward, moving on to commissioner and administrative staff reports.
Um I just have a, uh I do have a need for executive session, but I do um just want to give you an update on a couple of things. Um uh and really mostly to do uh with the uh, the capital projects. And so we are starting the year strong. As you saw tonight, we had the wastewater treatment plant, the signal at McCall and twenty-one, roundabout at Hodgville and Blue Jay resurfacing of Blue Jay uh and the field lights at McCall. Um we won't be slowing down for the next uh couple of months uh in our meetings as we have um Old River Road um uh resurfacing and lane widening. Uh roundabouts uh at Hodgville and Colacome and Hodgville and Goshen, roundabout at uh at State Route thirty in Colacome and uh Baker Park renovations, which uh we got our bids back uh yesterday, uh and that will definitely be on the next meeting. Um McCall lane widening and resurfacing um uh from uh CSX to Blandford. Uh and then in uh, in the spring, we will probably look for the rest of the road. Uh the Marlow Public Safety Building, which is the EMS fire building and sheriff's uh office facility that he has uh there on Blue Jay and seventeen. Uh that will be going out uh for bid for construction, as well as a replacement fire station in South Effingham on Lodesse Ziegler, Westwood Heights storm order improvements, um that will, should be on the February uh agenda. Uh central school renovations also in February and the forced main replacement. So all of these projects
Finally.
have taken years. Uh and I want to thank our crew from procurement to finance to engineering uh to um project management uh for helping them get across the finish line as well as our consultants. But um we're starting off the year strong, and this will uh continue all the way through.
So let me make sure I heard you right. So from CSX to Blandford on McCall, that will be done this year?
That, that will be done, um we anticipate this spring, yes.
Spring, okay.
Um and then from uh, from Blue Jay to twenty-one uh might take a little bit longer because we're making, we're fortifying that road a little bit more.
Good.
And all the other repaving and resurfacing projects also.
That's right, and that doesn't include the um, the T-Spots uh spring list, which we are, uh which we hope to get out early this year in um, in March to award, uh and then um uh so we can get a lot of work to, to continue in the spring.
Last year's stuff though before we start the new stuff, correct?
That's right. Uh and uh that, and if you all have any recommendations on such, on things you want to discuss at Effingham Day of the Capitol, we are do, we are having a retreat for a day and a half. Um uh and if you want to have, uh if there's things that you, topics you want to discuss, just please send me an email. Uh and I'll make sure that they're on the agenda. And that's my report.
Thank you, Tim. Uh any discussion from the board?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Uh I've sent out some emails on Golden Drive. I'm not sure where we're at with that, but uh that's been really disappointing, and it seems if I had to guess on how they're paving that thing, it's still not finished.
Correct. Um and I can give you an update, and this is something that we really have not had a problem with before, because we haven't had that many. Uh we've only had, you know, uh certain contractors who've been bidding on our stuff. Uh and so, yes, doing uh repaving in the winter is tricky. It's an on and off um uh process because temperatures have to be above a certain degree. Um but uh this road uh goes beyond that. I just think it's been, you know, you, and you know as well as I do that it's been taking way too long, and they've made commitments to finish it uh a couple of different times. And so um uh they still are within their contract, but uh in our future contracts for anything to do with resurfacing, um we are going to now put in wording in there that says that uh the uh, a road once started has to be substantially complete um uh before you uh move on to uh additional road projects, uh because that's what we're running into, uh into here. So that's kind of how we're going to address it, um but they, believe me, Jeremiah has been um all over them to get them to uh wrap that up uh and uh and, you know, move on to uh other roads. This is, from my understanding, is really the only road that we're, that for whatever reason, they've kind of been very lax in getting it completed. Um the uh, some of the other roads, again because of the warmer weather, they were really able to get fairly done fairly quickly and complete. Uh this one's just been um a headache to get done.
This is a really small road. It, it looks like they're just using whatever's left over from that day's work and then coming in and throwing a little bit down, and that's it. They're using the yard there to mobilize and then mobilize, and uh I know you had to reach out to them to get some, put, put some safety signs up as well. So that's very concerning. Um did have uh somebody reach out to me today about uh trash on the side of the road, getting a lot of it in the county, and I'm not sure why. Uh this particular constituent has been going, taking upon himself to pick up around, but then we're still, I'm sure we're still doing the, the prisoner, and they're making rounds and.
And so what we need to, um and what I do, and what I uh absolutely recommend um that you all do, uh if you're diving, driving down a road, um and, you know, you see that it's got uh, you know, a trash accumulation on it, just shoot me uh an email, or I can give you Griffin's email. Uh and uh he will usually get it, uh get the crews out there uh within the next day or the following day.
Yeah, go straight to Griffin. It's not something we should bug you with.
Yeah, what'd you say?
It shouldn't be something I had to bug you with, but if, I'll, I'll reach out to Griffin.
Sure.
Or the, or the warden. I mean, he's, anytime I'm, like Tim says, I'm riding down a road, I email Warden Scruggins and.
This is the first time I've heard it, this is the day, usually.
Probably best to go through Griffin just so he can follow.
And it was actually on Blue Jay, uh that was, he was talking about. I think that's about it. Just appreciate the job everybody's doing, looking forward to a new year, getting everything paved and. Oh, uh one more thing, Chelsea just reminded me uh with her smile. Um I know we've had some issues with uh compliance and code enforcement, and this kind of stirred some ideas for, going back and forth, and hopefully we can get those ideas put out that we can um make it a little harder to get that variance after the fact.
Yes.
So that, I'm looking forward to that, because everybody, because I, I didn't think about this till, till we were, we were talking back and forth on email. You know, when we give them a variance after the fact, we didn't have the, the opportunity to even do an inspection on that, you know, during the phases of that building or construction. So, you know, we're inspecting it as a hu- building as a whole, hoping we can catch everything that, and there's no way to do that unless you're inside the walls and electrical and everything else. So it's really a disservice to the county, and we don't even, we're putting a variance on something we really don't, are not confident in good building practices. Uh so I'm looking forward to that. Maybe we can get that done. If we make that, the, the process difficult enough, maybe they'll want to go ahead and get a permit on the front end of that instead of the rear end of that. And uh just asking for uh uh permission after the fact, so looking forward to that. Thank you.
From my clarity, what is our approach to inspections? Is, is it not phased presently?
Well, inspections in general? Yeah, and so um, I mean, we, we do have, you know, for multiple inspections, at least eight. I think it's eight on the single-family homes, but the, the issue um that uh Commissioner, Commissioner Burdette is bringing up is that when we do our overhead camera shots uh for uh, for GIS and for assessment, um we have a, we pay for a software feature that finds building changes and additional buildings. Uh and then we have GIS go in there and compare wha- what new buildings are there and what was permitted. This is also for um swimming pools. Uh and so we've uh, in the, uh I think in the December and the November and Au- October meetings, um we've, you know, we, we've basically went out to the, to the sites that we found. Uh and we've, um we've, in some cases, we have to, you know, the, the facility's already up. Um and so their only option is to either tear it down or to come uh to, come to the board and ask for a variance after the fact. Um we do have some puni- I mean, we do have some punitive uh things that we do. I mean, I think it's, is it like triple the? Dub- it's double, the permitting fees are doubled. They do have to get um, to have somebody, a, a third-party licensed um uh inspector or engineer sign off uh uh on it, um even if it's uh done, because we're not, we're not gonna go in there after the fact. It's there now, their obligation to pay someone uh to assure that the um, that the building is uh, is built to code and their, their license is on the line if it's not. Uh so um those are some of the things that we require. Uh but uh we will have a few more in front of you um as we kind of uh process them through the system. Uh and some of them are, you know, some, some large structures from individuals who, who knew the rules.
Sure.
Um so.
Yeah, my question to, to our board, and just something to think on is when do we draw the line in the sand and say today is the stopping point from this moving forward and start enforcing? Um I think some good public notices put out there to, you know.
Right.
Say this is, you know, today's the end. And uh moving forward, there will be penalties up to, you know, on demolition if need be.
That's right.
So, great, thank you, Tim. Uh for myself, um thank you all for being here. Um I'm gonna get this right. Six o'clock snuck up on me, and uh I need to set an alarm or something for that. Uh beyond that, um I'm glad to be working with you guys, every one of you. Uh welcome aboard, Mr. Helmy. And um that's all I have. Mr. Deloach, anything for you?
Uh just echo what uh Commissioner Burdette and Tim said earlier. Um, you know, is extremely frustrating over and over with, you know, it is nice that we voted on big-ticket items tonight, but good lord, that is um, that's taken a long time. So thank you to staff for everything you've done to get us here. Um I wish we could have more meetings like that on getting big-ticket items moving forward, but it takes time. And um so just want to say thank you to all, all of y'all that are, that are involved in it. I know it takes a lot. And just want to say uh welcome, new board members. Look forward to working with y'all. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Helmy, anything for you?
Um basically, concern about, you know, McCall Road, um I'm glad to hear, you know, that it's gonna be got there. Of course, going towards Springfield, you know, I was glad to see about the traffic light finally uh doing there. Um lot of just concern about the dump trucks, you know, there's, I constantly hear dump trucks, you know. They're, they're riding all over the place. They're riding where they shouldn't ride. They, you know, carry anyway. Just different complaints about dump trucks. Not as many anymore about the semis going in areas, but occasionally that'll be mentioned. Um DRT, I've got to mention.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, I guess it's more Springfield's problem technically, but it's flowing over to mine and fields district and um. I mean, it was, it's just on and off, and it's just, there's no rhyme or reason as to when it stinks so bad. And um, you know, they claim that the clouds are a problem. They claim that's what it's, though, it's, but it, it smells on days when it's gorgeous outside. So um I'm not sure what they're doing, but there's got to be some way, and they keep saying, of course, that it's not us, it's somebody else. Well, tell me who it is then. Point the finger where it goes. But it's, it's right there at Ebenezer for the most part. Um unless the, when the wind flows. You, y'all's probably smelt it riding by loves, I'm telling you. You can, if you go down Ebenezer, you can smell it. So there's, it'll be several days, nothing happens, never. And then all of a sudden, it's just horrible.
Slap you in the face.
Slap you in the face. So um we just need to keep working on them, because it's, it's, I don't, I don't think there's, I don't think there's a way to fix it as long as it's running. Okay.
And, and I, 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 if I can add on that, I know um Commissioner Kiefer um contacts me regularly on this. Um and um, you know, two routes um that we're, that we're looking at, and so, and, and one, I mean, if it works, great. Right? Um but um I'm not um putting too many eggs in the basket. But one, one thing that was recommended to me by the, the new city manager in uh, in Rincon that he was successful with in, in Pooler, uh was um an odor abatement company um that has some sort of material that negates all the smell or so on and so forth. Right? Um and so rather than kind of sit back and wait for them to try and get this done, I got the person's name. I reached out to um the IDA. They were there with our um EM, EMA, uh emergency management and fire. Uh they walked with the consultant there. They are going to try uh and implement it there and see if it's successful. Um and I, last we heard, the DRT agreed to do that. Um it would be great, but again, we've, we've tried um multiple angles to, to the point on uh this being a, a source other than um DRT. Uh and, and this is something Commissioner Kiefer and I discussed, is at this point, we know um DRT is a distinct smell. Um and um, you know, sadly, our, our, our nostrils have now, um can now basically tell you what, what is a, a DRT smell. It's a certain type of smell. Uh and um, and so I, you know, I just don't buy that. I, I, um and I, and I know they keep putting that out there that, you know, it's not them or that it's not detecting, but we don't buy it. We are looking at um legal avenues with EPD uh on this uh as well. Um both privately and with EPD uh to um, you know, we were hoping these fixes they put in would, would solve the problem. Uh they, they clearly did not, so. Um we're, we're, we, we are pushing ahead with, with, to give you all options on this, and, and we're not gonna stop until we uh, until it's resolved.
Well, I am concerned, because I mean, it, it does impact you. I mean, it, it burns your eyes sometimes and all that kind of stuff. So I mean, it's just a, it's a, it's, it's an issue, and um I don't know what the long-term effects would be. I mean, I don't think any of us can project that, but I think it's our duty to try to, try to do something about it. And um, I appreciate, appreciate what you're doing, leading out. If we need to take harsher steps, then that may be the way we go. I will encourage you all, though, if you smell it, it, pick up the phone, call EPD. Um I talked to a guy, and he says, you know, it's odor, it's hard, but he said, document, because that's the key. You know, if you have, well, you're the only one that called, you know, in a month. Nobody else was called. Nobody's gonna pay attention to you. But he said, doc- document, document. So, you know, take, take the time to call them and say, it's smelling.
And I too live downwind. Um I took a trip to San Antonio, Texas, and person I met there said, man, your clothes smell weird, and that was it. I guess I've kind of uh grown accustomed to it, so um that's, you know. Uh mine's a twofold question. Um, you know, what, what, and this is uh maybe more hypothetical than to get an answer right now, or is what are our legal avenues, not only just because of the smell, but what is the, their um requirements to report to the county um being they are annexed within Springfield? Um if they do have a leak, um because our last instance, um it wasn't them, wasn't them, wasn't them, and all of a sudden they had a um, a leaky flange. So that went on, what, for about a little over a week before, you know, we got that piece, so. Is there anything that we can legislate um to, you know, up their reporting requirements? I, I know, I'm sure they have reporting requirements they have to do for EPD, but how far is that going? Um or is it getting done?
My understanding that they really are, that they don't answer to the county when they're not in our jurisdiction. They're in Springfield's, which is a little bit of a hurdle. Um, but I'll.
Well, I'll say there's a couple of things.
Not that Springfield wouldn't work with us.
Environmentally, right, so, you know, gener- as a general rule, the environmental uh reporting uh requirements, um there are some uh that actually have to report to emergency management. Um uh and in that case, you know, it, it, it took them a while to find the leak, and when they found the leak, they reported it to us. We just, you know, they, I, I, I don't know what they, but that's what they said. As soon as they found it, they reported it to us, but. Believe me, I'm not defending them at all.
I don't think there's any way with, with, with all this, supposedly it takes four people to run that plant.
Yeah.
It's just so you know they've got systems. If there's a leak, there's gonna be a. It's just so you know they've got systems. If there's a leak, there's going to be a gauge somewhere or there's going to be an alarm somewhere. And to sit there and say, oh, my, I didn't know it was happening? I can't believe that. I can't believe you run a plant like that. But that's just, I can't believe it.
Yeah, to me, that's most insulting is that I have a nose, and I could probably find it in about three minutes.
Oh, you have no idea how insulting.
Right, and so, and so, it's, so what I think, where we can, we would then report to EPD. We have the residents report to EPD. Where the county, I think, if it were in the incorporated part of the county, then we can enforce nuisance ordinances on them. But I think, you know, what, an angle we can look in, and we can discuss it with the county attorney, is, you know, we, you know, we, you know, if we have standing, you know, we are a property owner here. We have the fire station that abuts that, where our staff is. We, you know, we clearly have standing to go, you know, potentially go after, after them, you know, for this. But we'd have to see how viable that is. And I think, I am looking, I did discuss this with the county attorney. I'm looking at, you know, potential attorneys that might have some environmental expertise on this. And we're waiting to hear back from one.
Because I know, you know, I know we have a nuisance ordinance on the books, but, you know, how much weight does that carry?
Well, we do, but we can't, we can't enforce it outside of our jurisdiction.
So, if your smell wafts across the line, you can't enforce it.
Right.
Very good.
Badly, yeah.
Maybe we need to look at maybe some kind of joint resolution with Springfield to, you know, work on joint enforcement. But nonetheless, very good. Thank you. Mr. Kiefer?
No, several things. Nothing major. I was going to mention that, scratch that off. The Ad Hoc Steering Committee and the Ebenezer Overlay District. I know Steve's not here. I was just kind of going to get an update.
Yeah, and so, I am, I do have an update on where we stand from the last meeting?
Yes, so, we had the steering committee recently, and I thought it was very successful. We have one scheduled for the 13th, and then one scheduled, January 13th, and then one scheduled for January 27th as well. They do have the AR-1 district and the AR-2 district, B1, B2, B3, and then light industrial and heavy industrial. So, they are reviewing those so that when we come back together, we can, we can go through those.
And we let them know that, you know, we, you know, while we may not make the deadline that we originally put on there for the moratorium, you know, to try and get, you know, let's try and get these recommendations wrapped up so that, you know, we can kind of get it in front of you all, any of the changes, so that we can have a debate on it. That is the, that's not the Historic Overlay District. Do we have any update on the Historic Overlay District?
So, yep, the Historic Overlay District. So, we're hoping to have that at the workshop, if we have a workshop for the 21st, and then potentially have it on the agenda that night as well. So, yes, sir.
So, it's further along than...
It is, yes, sir.
Great. And I guess the resurfacing schedule specific to D5, do we know anything?
Yeah, and so, we, right now, I would say everything's kind of on hold, right? All the contracts are out there for most of the roads that we've discussed with you. But the, everything's on hold until we can get a string of warm weather. I wouldn't make any guarantees until, you know, to, or tell, hey, we may have a window in February. You know, that's true. But I would say we're probably looking towards mid-March, when things consistently warm up, that we can actually, they can start going full steam ahead.
And that's, that's kind of what I've indicated. Unfortunately, but we do have a, we do have a definitive date of completion in the contract. That's the only thing we definitely have.
For that, for that contract, it's April 11th.
Okay, okay. So, and I've kind of tried to, you know, explain to people, we can't control the day-to-day operations.
Right.
Everybody's just antsy and ready to get their roads done.
But it'll get done.
All right. That's it. That's it for me.
Very good. Anything from further staff? If not, we'll move on. Understand, according to Tim, we have a need for executive session. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session, executive session to discuss personnel, property, and pending litigation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you all.